Your advice, seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the real subsidiary to the specific decision of the historic zoning commission. First, I'd like to get a motion to approve last month's meeting of minutes.
So moved.
Have a second?
Sorry?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, last month's meeting minutes are approved. We have a consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So first, I'd like to open up the public just to see is there any item on the consent agenda that needs to be removed? Okay, so the consent agenda will stay as noted in the packet.
The first three items on the consent agenda are all in the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The first one is 1501 Beechwood Avenue, and that's an application for a rear addition. The second is 2605 Oakland Avenue, and that's an application for a new addition and for a detached accessory dwelling unit. And the third is 1720 Linden Avenue, which is an application for a rear addition and for partial demolition. And the demolition is of some nonhistoric rear additions and for reopening of the front porch, or the side, front side porch on the right side of the image in front of you.
The last two cases on the consent agenda, 113 Woodland Street, that's an application for a new detached accessory structure with a setback reduction. It's in the Lakeland Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. And 1211 Paris Avenue in the Belmont Hillsborough Conservation Overlay, that's an application for a ridge raise and rear dormer addition enclosing, or further enclosing, rear corner porch that's already been partially enclosed. And both of those, and the three before, staff has found to meet their respective design guidelines and recommends their approval.
Okay, thank you very much, staff. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries and the consent agenda is approved. Next thing on the agenda is 217 South Tenth Street.
And this is an appeal of a violation of a preservation permit for a modular building at 217 South Tenth Street. This building, constructed in 1939, is now the home of Liberty Collegiate Academy, a metro charter school. It received a permit last year for the first of two planned modular classrooms, the first one you see here in this image. It was installed-
If I might just point out that real quick, we did have one commissioner recuse himself just for the, just to be noted.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Robin.
It was installed with vertical cladding rather than horizontal as specified in the permit, but at that time, staff chose not to make them correct it because we knew that this second unit would come in and obscure the view of it. It would be placed in front of it. But, so on May 16th, 2012, the applicant requested approval of that second modular building. And because of the limit on choices available for modular buildings, they requested a reveal of seven and quarter reveal instead of the typical five-inch reveal. The commission approved the building with the wider reveal since the building is sort of long-term temporary. And I bring up the reveal issue and the inappropriate siding on the first one just to show that several compromises have already been made, and therefore, the staff didn't feel like they could approve this, this new change on the staff level because of that and because it doesn't meet the guidelines. So during a routine check on July 17th, staff noticed that the building had embossed siding, and the applicant was notified, and they chose to appeal to you to keep the inappropriate siding. Embossed siding is a material that has never been approved by the commission in the past and does not meet Section 2B4 of the Design Guidelines for New Construction. The guidelines require that materials' textures be visually compatible with and similar to those of adjacent buildings. Historic wood lap-sided buildings have a smooth finish as opposed to a deep grain. Historic wood lap-sided, excuse me, further, the design guidelines explain the commission's policy for cement fiber siding, stating that it's appropriate for new construction, but when used, it should be smooth and not stamped or embossed, and have a maximum of a five-inch reveal. In order to obtain a temporary occupancy permit, since this is a classroom building, the applicant agreed to replace the siding within two weeks of your decision today if you disapprove the current siding. Staff recommends disapproval of the request to retain inappropriate siding based on the facts that the building is highly visible, and the existing siding does not meet Section 2B4 of the Lakeland Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. And the applicants are here if you have any questions for them.
Thank you, Robin. Would the applicant like to present before the commission?
Hello. My name is Joe Booker. I am an architect with Southeast Venture, and I'm here representing Liberty Collegiate Academy. As Robin stated, we came before the commission on May 16th to assist our client in getting a temporary building to meet their space needs. And while we acknowledge and understand that a modular classroom is definitely not the ideal solution in historic district, you know, prior, before coming before the board, we met directly with the historic staff and really tried to modify the standard design of a modular building to be a little bit more appropriate for this, this style of neighborhood. During this meeting, after this meeting especially, we communicated all the comments from, from the staff, including a parapet, adding a parapet to the building along Fatherland Avenue so that you don't see a sloped roof, so it doesn't quite look as much like a modular building. Storefront entry doors facing, facing Fatherland, making sure that we had aluminum windows. We made sure that the building could meet the ground a little bit, so we added a different textured skirt to the building. And then, of course, we discussed this fiber cement, making sure that it was fiber cement rather than the metal siding, which is standard on these modular buildings. I bring this up because I want everybody to understand that none of these items that are listed are a standard order issue for the modular building. And it was our full intent to meet the staff's and the commission's request and all of the guidelines that were set forth. There is an example in the, in the same neighborhood, in the same overlay district, at a metro school, which this is technically a metro school, that a portable has been installed facing Woodland Street that doesn't meet any of these guidelines. It's a, and that's in your packet, it's a metal building, no skirting on the bottom. I don't know when it was installed, so it might've, it might've had an overlap there. But it's important to note that the intent was there because, because of a short kind of project duration and the start of the school, a modular building kind of has to be put into manufacturing before we have all the approvals. So there's a certain amount of risk that we undertake. There was specific requirements of smooth inside the permit language, they weren't noticed right away. It was, it was just, it was honestly just an error. I mean, we really did just have an error there. And I'm sure that the board wants to know why we didn't meet the specific requirement. And I think it's important to understand the timing of how this all happened. So our first meeting with the modular sales staff, the people that you purchase one of these units from, they're not the people that build it, they're not the people that install it, not the people that design it, was on April 27th. On May 1st, four days later, we submitted for this meeting, which occurred on May 16th for the, for this approval. And then on May 7th, which was six days later, we met with the staff. And that's when we kind of went over all these things, adding of the parapet, the changing of the windows, changing of the doors, making sure that we were trying to dress up this building. We tried to incorporate all those things. We didn't at the time get into the specific of the smooth siding. They communicated fiber cement siding, we passed that right along. It was our, it was our intent to follow that. We had staff recommendation to approve the project at that time, and we knew that we were going into, into the, this hearing with, with that approval. So on May 9th, we released the modular for construction. This is, on May 16th, we had the hearing, or we came before y'all, and we discussed this project for the first time. And then on May 17th, or May 22nd, after the hearing and after the approval, we received the copy of the permit. In the permit is where the language for the smooth siding is, is stated. Less than two weeks later, on June 4th, is when the modular was completed. So there is quite a, quite a bit in overlap here. And the modular buildings, it's a desirable solution for many schools because they can put into place in such a very short period of time. The outline that I just showed you is, it's six and a half weeks from the first meeting with these folks until the time that it was completed. So it's, it's really this kind of fast burn process, and we're trying to control that, we're trying to do the best that we can. A concern was raised during the last hearing that, you know, a modular building wasn't appropriate for the neighborhood, but so long as it was temporary, it could be installed. And it's stipulated in the hearing that lease terminates on June 24th, 2017. At that point, the modular building either has to be removed, or they have to come back before this board to get approval to keep it in place. So it really is a true, a temporary solution for this small charter school that serves this community. And unfortunately, replacing the siding is not a simple endeavor. We understand the request for the nontextured siding, but we feel that maybe mitigating the overall visibility of the building may be a better solution. We propose a screening buffer be installed aligning with the sidewalk. This would be a landscaping buffer, and the plans that are in front of you illustrate what we're proposing. While initially completely obscuring the building is difficult, the landscape will hopefully create a softer edge and shift focus away from the building along the street. And over time, it'll grow into a more solid barrier. This should not only reduce the focus of this temporary building, but create a kind of a long-term, less harsh condition on the sidewalk along Fatherland, and provide a natural barrier for whatever occurs in that school's backyard in the future after these buildings are removed. The planting materials that are selected are all quick growth, and they actually are intended to be more permanent than this temporary modular solution. So that it, we're leaving them there, we're actually trying to improve that sidewalk in that neighborhood. So we intend to leave that landscaping along the street edge, and we also want to add two shade trees along Fatherland to kind of help improve the scale and character of the street section, and those would obviously grow over time. We really hope that that, that does address some of the concerns of the building and how it is, and because of the temporary nature of the building, we request that we were able to leave the siding.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the commission to the applicant? Go ahead.
I sympathize, or I've heard, we've heard the, I think, heard your request and maybe some of the reasons to not have to remove the siding, which obviously would raise the cost of the building, and the intent of that building was, was to be cost, as cost-effective as possible to house classrooms. I'll say by the same token, that puts us in quite a pickle as a board, given that this, accepting the fact this is a school, it serves a community, I'll say to approve something like this is, is a difficult predicament for this board to be in because it's not an isolated case. There've been others that have appeared before us who have requested the same thing, and their outcome has, has, has not been to preserve something like this. So I would hope, I would hope there's an understanding from you that it puts us in, in quite a pickle, and I sympathize with, with the situation, how fast-track this has moved, and, and what it is. But I guess I'd also like, I feel like we've gone a long way to try to make this happen, and then to have this piled on top of it, I don't have anything other. My point is that it puts us in quite a predicament to, even if we wanted to, to be able to approve something like this. I'm not saying that we won't, I just know as, as part of the discussion, it is, it's a difficult situation when, when things are constructed and folks come back to us. Certainly, we'll consider those very seriously, but that is, that is just as difficult as it is for this school to economically be able to operate in enclosed space. It's as difficult for us as a commission to weigh these after the fact.
Jim?
Yeah, my question would be if it's appropriate to ask this question in justifying the landscaping over replacing, what is the difference in cost? Because I mean, landscaping is going to cost quite a bit to do a burn, but what's the difference in cost of redoing it?
It's significant.
Pardon?
It's significant. There's-
Twice as much, three times as much?
Twice as much.
Okay.
Twice as much to-
The probably is the siding is.
Any other questions to the applicant? Not definitely, okay. Okay, thank you very much. Do we, anybody like to speak on for or against this project from the audience? Okay, closed public hearing.
I have a question for staff in looking at the site plan. What would the staff consider in this building visible from the public right-of-way? Which facades? All?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Which, what would, what would be considered in looking at the site plan, the facades visible from the right-of-way with, given your familiarity with the project?
There are three sides that are highly visible. The one that's between it and the brick building, even though it's fairly close, it's, from one of the images you'll see in your staff recommendation, it's highly visible. Then, of course, the one facing the street, and the one with the mechanicals on the side. So then the very backside that faces the other unit is the one that you would not really see.
Okay.
You know, I agree, Ben. You know, this is a tough situation, was probably somewhat of a stretch for some of the commissioners previously when we approved this. I don't have the history, Ben, that you do, so I'm not familiar with, and maybe staff can, can fill us in on, you know, other case, examples like this where we've had, where we've forced the property owner to replace siding like this. But, you know, I, I see it, you know, of all the mistakes that could have occurred along the way, this, this may be somewhat minor. And, you know, you don't know that embossed siding is any expensive than smooth siding, so it was clearly an honest mistake and a situation of, of timing. It is a temporary structure. It's unfortunate, but, you know, I don't know that it's really worth, you know, forcing someone to change it. But I'm interested in what the other commissioners have to say.
Well, I think, in speaking first, that I do feel like that, I mean, being, if it was a permanent structure, I would have a lot, lot different feel about the embossed siding. I think the only problem is, is one of the comments that I think staff brought up, that this is a temporary to permanent. We just have to, you know, in 2017, it could keep going on and on and on as opposed to really going away. I will, however, say that I really appreciate the, the landscape idea to soften it. I feel like that in some ways, we might get more bang for, but bang for the buck for having more of that softness with the siding. But, you know, appreciating the other commissioners to kind of weighing in on that, but it, the temporary thing is kind of what I want us to make sure we look at too.
It's also ironic that we may have boxed ourselves sort of in a funny corner. I mean, the first building had the vertical, it's not supposed to have, and we let that, I don't know that we, that didn't come before us. But anyway, here we've got all of the things that we don't approve, and then we adding another thing, and they leave out one little detail, so it's, it's-
Salt in the wound.
Yeah, it's, well, it's kind of, how do you make the argument that, well, we're going to be really persnickety and, and switch it over to smooth? Is this the kind of siding that it's come smooth and you have to decide which, which way to do it?
It, some does, that's true. I will give you a little background. In the past, on every case that has come before you, where an applicant has requested keeping that siding, it's been denied. So this would be changing a precedent that you've set.
But those were all permanent structures. I mean-
As permanent as anything else. I mean, this will be here for at least 10 years.
Yeah.
At least 10.
I thought it was-
Five years.
2007, oh, five years.
Five years is a long time.
Sure.
Just this one more question.
Yeah.
Is there a trigger mechanism to make this come back before the commission in 2017 to review the landscaping, or, you know, trees blow down and landscaping dies sometimes? If that, if it were to be passed, is there a way to look at it again in 2017 for this body against the-
I think the applicant indicated that the, that the term was only till 2017. However, I will say it'll probably be a lot, we'd be in a probably more difficult situation, probably if we feel like to try to take care of that then, as if, because it's had this lifespan and, you know. So I, I think we should probably try to make the best decision today if possible. But, but yes, to answer your question, based on what the applicant said, it would come before the commission again, correct?
It would. And I'd also like to clarify that in the past, and according to the guidelines, landscaping is not something that you review, and has never been something that has been approved to help something that doesn't meet the guidelines. That's, landscaping has never been an issue that's been allowed that, if that makes sense.
Admittedly, this is a mistake, and I think it, you know, obviously, if it could be done over with, again, it would be. I have been here, and we have had applicants before us who have borne the expense of this. And it's pretty specifically stated both on the permit, again, understanding the permit arrives, it comes to the applicant, not to the builders of this modular temporary structure. But it also states pretty specifically in the guidelines, this smooth siding is, is what's, what's required. Again, it's, it's an unfortunate issue, but I would caution us as a commission, it's kind of a slap in the face to those who've come before us, and, and whether it be smooth siding or not, or there've been other cases where the guidelines weren't met, or projects weren't built to the documents, and at the applicant or owner's expense, those things were changed. Now, certainly, that's not to the, to the letter, or there, there has been some leeway in, in the past, but I would just caution us as a, as a body, this, you know, five years from now, our terms are five-year renewables, or five years if we sign up again. And so that memory might not pass through this, we need to carefully consider this and know that, you know, accept it for what it is, but also accept the guidelines for what they are and what, when we, you know, make a determination or an interpretation of the guidelines, what that means and what this might bring back before us if documents aren't followed and, and the guidelines are bent and/or, whether accidentally or intentionally.
Any other comments from the commission?
I just have one question. Staff may be able to answer, if not, maybe the applicant, but is there any landscape requirements either from the zoning ordinance, or that we, any conditions that we put on our approval relative to landscape? I seem to remember there was some discussion about working on landscape, landscape plan that would be consistent with the neighborhood, working with staff.
We don't review landscaping at all. It is something that they talked about, and it's my understanding that they intend to add, but it's not something that we review.
Do I have a motion? More discussion? Yeah, we do have to. And I can't make a motion.
I think that, that I can. I think I'm convinced that we need to disapprove of this. So I'm in for this approval of a request to reclaim, retain the siding at Lakeland Springs, at 217 South Tenth Street in the Lakeland Springs East Neighborhood Conservation Overlay.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, then I have to vote too, and I'll vote aye in approval.
I'm sorry, I didn't get counsel in before I'm, it was aye, okay. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll do all in favor with the hands again.
The only reason I bring it up is because you have a rule that says the, the chair shall vote in the case of a tie, or if the requisite four concurring votes have not been met. So I was trying to count to make sure that whatever the motion was, got four concurring votes.
Yeah, so-
Tough hand vote.
Yeah. Call for a hand vote.
Let me just get my negatives straight. What are we voting on? What are we doing?
We're voting for your motion.
To disapprove it?
Disapprove it. And we had one dissenting, but we'll do a hand vote for all in favor of the motion on the floor. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 905B Baskerville Street.
905B Baskerville Street, this is an application to construct a new single-family structure on a vacant parcel. It's actually half, or roughly half, of what used to be a double lot that was recently subdivided. And the structure will be a two-story structure, 29 feet tall from grade to the ridge, and 32 feet wide across the front elevation. This two-story house would generally be considered to be in the craftsman style, with a full-width front porch, and as proposed, with a clipped gable roof. Staff looked at the area and found that two-story houses of the similar size all tend to have hipped roofs. So staff recommends changing the roof form from the clipped gable to a hip, and also to extending the eaves, as craftsman houses typically have wider eaves. Just here's some surrounding context of, on the street. The 905B is on the upper, but it's actually a heavily wooded area. And then the south side of the street, you can see two, two-story houses there. And that's one, more or less, right across the street, a hipped roof, two-story house. The front facade of the new building will be parallel to Baskerville Street. This matches the orientation, and also the setbacks are consistent with other historic houses on the street, and will maintain the rhythm established by historic houses. The front facade of the structure would have three evenly spaced bays on the first and second story, and this is similar to the window patterns you would see on a historic craftsman house. The side facades, as proposed, both have large sections of wall space that didn't have any opening, and as you know, the guidelines require that new construction have a rhythm of solid and void that's compatible with surrounding historic houses. And those typically have a window or door every 10 to 12 feet. So staff recommends the addition of a window on the left and two on the right side to be more compatible with, and to meet guideline 3B2F. Staff, of course, would review the window material, but wood, aluminum clad wood are typically appropriate. From these drawings, staff has also added a recommendation that the windows and doors have four-inch flat casings, as is typical of craftsman houses. Other materials, in addition to the windows, would have a standard fiberglass asphalt shingle on the roof, primary roof and porch roof. The applicant has proposed to use an LP brand SmartSide Foundation Series composite siding, which staff is recommending approval. We've seen another line of the LP SmartSide siding that the commission has found to be inappropriate in the past. This is slightly different. It's more, it's finer grained, it's more similar to cement fiber, although with a different resin or different mixture along with the wood pulp. We have a sample, if you'd like to see it, but staff is recommending approval of that. And that same material would also be used for corner boards and trim. The proposed front door would be fiberglass. Typically, fiberglass doors have also not been approved in the Edgefield Preservation Zoning Overlay, but staff has received a sample of that as well, and determined that it looked very- shingle on the roof, primary roof and porch roof. The applicant has proposed to use an LP brand SmartSide Foundation Series composite siding, which staff is recommending approval. We've seen another line of the LP SmartSide siding that the commission has found to be inappropriate in the past. This is slightly different. It's more, it's finer grained, it's more similar to cement fiber, although with a different resin or different mixture along with the wood pulp. We have a sample if you'd like to see it, but staff is recommending approval of that. And that same material would also be used for corner boards and trim. The proposed front door would be fiberglass. Typically fiberglass doors have also not been approved in the Edgefield Preservation Zoning Overlay, but staff has received a sample of that as well and determined that it looked very comparable and appropriate. It can be painted or stained similarly, much as you would with a wooden door. So for that reason, staff is also recommending approval of the fiberglass door for new construction. Other materials, porch floor and stairs will be concrete. The front porch columns will be three feet tall on stone pedestals with stone caps. Staff recommends final approval of stone material. Other landscape, we don't review, of course, vegetation, but permanent landscape fixtures, fences, paving, et cetera, those placement of exterior HVAC utility items, those can be approved by staff. And in summary, staff recommends approval of the new construction with the conditions that, based on the application, with the conditions that this roof shall be hipped in order to be more compatible, that additional windows be added on the left and right elevations, that staff shall approve the color of the roof material, staff shall approve the window material, windows have four-inch casings, that the eaves be extended, that staff approve final material selections, stone, of stone, and that exterior appurtenances, light fixtures, permanent landscape fixtures, et cetera, will be approved by staff. Staff otherwise finds the proposal to meet the applicable sections of the design guidelines for the Edgefield Preservation Overlay. And having said that, the staff recommends approval. We've actually, I believe, worked out all of those conditions since writing and sending you the staff recommendations, so we still keep those in the recommendation, but at least the applicant has agreed to all of them.
Okay, good. Any other questions for staff?
Clarification for staff. In mention of four-inch trim at the windows, these documents show trim on three sides, the two gems in the head. Would that include trim below the sill or is it typical of a craftsman style house?
It would.
Yes. Any other questions for staff?
One clarification, I only note this from our drive-throughs after we've seen projects constructed, is oftentimes the porch rack will be framed as the house is framed in and the porch is poured and the columns are either are larger than the foundation for the porch is or, and somehow get a little bit odd and off. And this very specifically gives dimension to those and certainly would imply that the porch rack would be built interior to the exterior, the exterior frame of the house. Oftentimes, constructability-wise, that might not happen in the field, so may want to encourage that communication to take place between the owner and the framer and whoever else needs to make that happen so we don't have.
Will do, yeah. It's, if it's built as drawn, it should be good, but a lot of times they move the porch rack out a few inches.
Sure, go ahead.
The drawings that we have call for a parched concrete block foundation. Can you go through again what's being proposed for the foundation?
Oh, actually, here are the updated drawings. I received those this morning by email, but didn't have time to look at them all that thoroughly, but conversations with the architect and the future homeowner. It will be parched, which is appropriate. Originally, the design or the plan said painted concrete block, so that was something that we agreed to compromise or a change early on. It may not have been reflected in the drawings. Also, there was a aluminum fascia that will also be trimmed, wooden trim or wood or composite.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Would the applicant like to make a statement?
I have no statement.
Okay, just that you agree with all the recommendations of staff?
Yes.
All right, great. Okay, close, oh, is anybody in the audience that would like to speak on or before or not against, or against this project? Okay, enclosed public hearing. Discussion?
Move approval of staff's recommendation.
All, motion has been put up for the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries, 905B Boscoval Street is approved. The next on the agenda is 1902 Russell Street.
Oh, it's already up there. I apologize, you got an incomplete version of the staff recommendation in the mail. I believe a corrected version has been emailed to you. Hopefully you got that. 902 Russell Street. This is a one-story cottage constructed after 1946 because of its date of construction is more recent than other houses in the vicinity. This is considered to be a non-contributing structure because the building, excuse me, I'll back up. The applicant is proposing to demolish the entire structure and because the building does not contribute to the character, demolition does meet the design guidelines. We've had discussions with the applicant about the subsequent new construction. Plans have been submitted, but nothing is for review today. So staff is recommending approval today only of the demolition of the non-contributing structure at 1902 Russell Street, finding that application to meet the Lockland Springs Neighborhood Conservation District guidelines.
So just, this is just demolishing, demolishing this?
Just demolition.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions to staff? Okay, is the applicant in here, like president, like to speak? Apparently not. Anybody in the audience would like to speak for or against this project? Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion? Or motion?
I'll move approval of staff recommendation.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries for 1902 Russell Street. Next on the agenda is 1713 Sweetbrier.
And that item has been removed at the request of the applicant.
Right, I apologize. 1713 Sweetbrier Avenue has been removed. Next item on the agenda is 1809 Sweetbrier Avenue.
1809 Sweetbrier Avenue, you may recall, had a non-contributing structure that the commission approved for demolition early of this year, May or June, and that structure has been demolished. And since that time, the application to build a two-story on the house, two-story house on the lot was disapproved, so it is still a vacant lot. The applicant is proposing to construct a new one-and-a-half-story house and a one-and-a-half, two-story accessory building on the vacant lot. The house will have a maximum height of 27 feet from the existing grade to the ridge and an eve height, primary eve height of 13 feet six inches. This house at the peak is actually taller than some of the historic houses nearby, but not so much that it is not compatible. Additionally, the majority of the mass of the house is in the first structure and, of course, it's very minor massing, much smaller amount of massing up in the upper story because of the gabled roof. But staff would still recommend a condition to review the final grading if that affects the foundation height. The front facade of the building will be 38 feet wide across the front and it will be approximately 68 feet deep front to back on the sides. This would be deeper than the historic houses in the immediate context, but the lot is also 50% wider than the average lot for the area. So staff finds the relative scale to be compatible and somewhat mitigated because of the width of the lot. Materials are common contemporary new construction materials such as fiber cement siding, smooth split face block foundation, fiberglass roof shingles. Front porch will have square composite columns and brick bases and staff is asking to review final brick sample before purchase and installation. Front door is proposed to be wood. Staff would also want to see any final door specifications prior to purchase. With those reviews, staff finds materials to meet the design guidelines. The roof, I'll stay here on the house. The roof is a side-facing gable with a shed dormer on the front slope. These roof forms and pitches are compatible, very commonly found throughout the historic district. I've gone into deeper detail in the staff recommendation, but just quickly, the window proportions of the sides and window placement are compatible and meet the design guidelines. Setbacks, orientation and lot coverage are all compatible. Further details is in your staff recommendation. I can explain if you like, but other than that, and staff is, the existing driveway and parking pad shown on the site plan are going to be replaced with a driveway, just a driveway, and staff recommends that it should approve that permanent paving feature and the other appurtenances, walkways, HVAC units prior to final permitting. So that's for the primary structure. Onto the accessory structure. Sorry, it's a new remote. We just bought it this morning. The project also includes a detached accessory structure that is 20 feet by 24 feet in footprint. That footprint is subordinate to the primary house and meets all the setback and zoning requirements, I shouldn't say zoning, but setback requirements, and would be accessed from that front driveway. The materials for the structure would match those of the house, which are compatible. Because staff, because the building faces the street, staff has asked that the garage door be two separated vehicle doors as opposed to one large vehicle door. The proposed structure would have an eve height of 16 feet and a ridge height of 23 feet six inches. Staff finds that this height is not subordinate to the new house, which, as I said earlier, would have an eve height of 13 feet six inches. So staff is asking that the ridge height be lowered to approximately 20 feet from grade and that the eve height be lowered at least two feet. With these proportions, staff finds that the scale of the accessory structure would meet the neighborhood context. In summary, here's, I think, another view of that accessory structure. Staff is recommending approval of the construction of the infill building, primary building and accessory building, with the conditions that staff review any grading changes that includes retaining walls, excavation and fill. Staff shall approve brick samples, front door specifications and any changes from the materials indicated on the drawings. The driveways, walkways, appurtenances and HVAC locations shall be approved by staff and that the ridge height of the accessory building shall be reduced to 20 feet and the eaves of that structure should be lowered by two feet. With those conditions met, staff feels that, finds that this recommendation would meet the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood District Design Guidelines. And a representative of the applicant is here.
Any questions to staff?
Sorry, I just have one question on the height. In the drawings, it looks like it's 27 feet from existing grade to the ridgeline, and that's what I think you just said. And in the report, it mentions 31 feet.
Yeah.
Is that because of the slope?
I'm sorry, that was, yes, that, I was, it started on an earlier version of the drawings because this came to the commission last month or two months ago and was disapproved. And in changing from the earlier version to the current version, I think I changed the written text of that, but not the part that was inside the parentheses, so.
Okay, so what we're looking at is 27, not 31?
Correct, 27, 27 feet from grade.
Make sure I understood one other comment you'd made about, you said it is subservient enough to the main structure. It's not.
It is not.
But you've made a recommendation to lower it or you're?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just, sorry, I started looking at something else. And my other something else was the, I just noticed that the garage doors are not centered under it and it looks like it's because of the way the site plan is, but did staff talk at all about that or?
That wasn't too concerning to us. That was, I imagine, to accommodate an interior stair. It's not centered, but with a, such a small footprint and the distance that this would be from the street, it seemed that that wasn't greatly contrasting and it's so much to be incompatible.
Okay.
Unless the commission feels otherwise.
Any other questions to staff?
Could we, do you like the design of the garage door? Is that something that we could have input in or, I mean, I think all of the panels, the repetition of the panels is not in keeping with, it's a more modern.
Typical.
Well, if it helps, we have said in some, in most cases in the last two years, if the doors are facing the street, that they should be two separate doors instead of one large door, and that might help with your concern.
Of course, typically accessory structures face an alley. This is one of those cases where I think the alley is kind of abandoned and overgrown, so there, and it does have an existing front-facing driveway. So normally, we don't see garage doors, but in this case we would, so we can make an additional condition on something like that, or you can.
Just want a clarification. What we're looking at on the screen is a single door, but the staff is recommending, but not making a condition of approval, to make it two separate doors?
It has been a condition of others-like projects in the past since it faces the street, so it may be a condition you'd like to add.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions to staff? Okay, would the applicant like to speak before the commission?
I've been working with Sean, so.
Do you mind, yeah, just come to the front and just state your name and address?
Do any click on it? I've been working with Sean Alexander on it. I think that we've got most of the basis covered and the garage door issue is not a problem. We can separate it if we need to. Also, in regards to the design of the garage door, I'd like to point out that it's not the type that you see, it's not going to be, the squares are not as prominent as they show in a 2D drawing, just because it's painted one color and they're really not, you know, it's not as prominent as it looks like in the 2D drawing. Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay, any questions to the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience like to speak before or against this project? Okay, closed, okay, you were just doing that, okay, closed public hearing. Discussion?
It looks like on the, just to make, I probably should ask this of staff, but I think as we, this is dimension from, it shows a flat grade for the garage, which I don't think probably is going to be the case, but it may be. But, and this is clarification maybe for staff, is that are we measuring from the finished floor of the garage, the recommendations for 20 feet to the ridge and then it would be a reduction of two feet to the, to the, I think it's 20 feet to the top of the ridge and then the eaves would be lowered by two feet? Is that measured from the slab, the garage slab or is that measured from grade?
I believe that was, yeah, that was from grade here. Yes, it's from grade to the ridge for the eaves and for the eaves also from grade.
Okay, any more discussion or comments? Or a motion?
I'll move approval of the project 1809 Sweetbrier with staff recommendations and the stipulation that the garage door be separated, because it faces the street, which is uncommon in many of our districts, be separated into individual doors. And with clarification that in the staff's recommendation, that the ridge heights of the accessory building be measured from average grade around the, around the structure, that I move approval with staff recommendation. that I move approval, the staff recommendation.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Next on agenda is 1404 Clayton Avenue.
1404 Clayton Avenue is a minimal traditional home constructed circa 1925. The application before you is for a near rear addition. Here is the site plan, and the new rear addition is outlined in red. The new addition meets all base zoning requirements for setbacks. It is located entirely behind the historic house and is inset 2 feet from each of the sidewalls of the house. Note that the application does not include any changes to the existing rear accessory structure, which you can see on the site plan. The applicant is proposing to add two window openings on the left facade towards the back of the house, indicated with a red dotted line on the image above. Staff finds the addition of these window openings appropriate because they match the neighboring window opening and are located towards the rear of the side facade, making them only minimally visible. The proposed addition outlined here in red is a two-story addition to a one-story house. The addition ties into the historic house at the house's ridge. At a point 40 feet behind the front wall of the house, the addition rises in height to be a total of 3 feet 10 inches taller than the historic structure. The design guidelines note that a structure can be up to 4 feet taller than a one-story house like this one, if the taller portion of the addition is more than 40 feet behind the front of the house and the addition is inset from the sidewalls of the addition. Staff finds that the proposed addition meets these criteria. The guidelines further state that an addition that is taller than a historic house should have a hipped, side-gabled, or clipped gable roof to decrease the visual mass of the addition. Staff notes that a portion of the addition, which you can see outlined here in red, will have a front-facing gable, and asks that a condition of approval be that the roof form be changed to have a clipped gable, hipped roof, or side gable. In addition, staff asks that the eve height of this portion of the roof be lowered by approximately 9 to 12 inches in order to match the eve height of the remaining portion of the addition. Staff also notes that the front facade shown shows the addition as being approximately 4 feet 6 inches taller than the house. So this drawing is showing that the addition is 4 feet 6 inches taller. However, the two side facades show it as being 3 feet 10 inches taller, and staff finds that the 3 feet 10 inches is an okay and appropriate height or amount to be taller, but not the 4 foot 6. So we ask that a condition of approval be that a new front facade drawing be submitted showing the 3 foot 10 inch height difference between the addition and the historic structure. The application also involves re-cladding the existing side enclosed porch with a hardy panel siding with 4-inch trim and battens. Staff finds this alteration appropriate because the side portion, the side portion would have originally been an open side porch, and the existing enclosure that you can see now in the picture is not historic. And here is the rear facade. The proposed materials for the addition include hardy plank siding with a reveal to match that of the historic house, a split-face concrete block foundation, architectural shingle roof, mirror tech trim, and cedar post porch and metal screens. Staff finds that the known materials meet the design guidelines, but asks to review and approve the window and door materials and specifications, and the color of the asphalt shingle roof prior to purchase and installation of these materials. In addition, staff asks that a 4- to 6-inch mullions be included between all double and triple window openings on the project. That was the last one. So in conclusion, staff finds that the proposed addition meets the design guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood with the following conditions. One, the applicant submit a new front facade elevation, showing that the addition will only be 3 feet 10 inches taller than the house. Two, the front-facing gable portion of the addition have a clipped gable, hipped roof, or side gable roof form. Three, the eve height of the front-facing gable portion of the addition be lowered by approximately 9 to 12 inches in order to match the eve height of the remaining portion of the addition. Four, 4 to 6, four, 4 to 6 inch mullions be included between all double and triple windows. And finally, five, staff review and approve the asphalt shingle roof color and the specifications of materials for all windows and doors. Happy to answer any questions if commissioners have any questions?
Would, I'm not sure the applicant would suggest this, but would, would staff be, I guess it would have the same effect if the slope of the roof were changed such that all the eaves matched all the way around, would that, given the stipulation that they either hipped and or clipped the, clipped the front gable, would that be acceptable as well?
Well, we would not want to see the front-facing gable kind of in the front, if that's what you would mean, so.
Actually, I'm thinking if they changed the slope, as long as the eaves match all the way around and that the eve of the front is lowered to match the rest of the eaves around the house, is that an option?
I think we would still want to see either a clipped gable or a hipped roof.
Certainly, certainly.
Yeah, for four. But if, yes, if all of the eaves were changed, that would be fine, yes.
Great. Any more questions to staff? Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here and like to speak before the commission? Okay. Was the applicant okay with all the conditions?
I sent the applicant the staff recommendations and a summary of our conditions, and I did not hear back, so I can't answer that.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Would anybody in the audience like to speak before against this project? Okay. Closed public hearing, discussion, or motion?
We approve staff recommendation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries, 1404 Clayton Avenue.
Chairman, I'm going to need to recuse myself from the last item on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Mr., he has accused himself. The next item on the agenda is 1515 Fifth Avenue North.
Yeah, that's right. This is the Worthen Bag Company that I'm, you may be very familiar with. Looking at this image, if you look at where 7th Avenue would cross the middle of this complex, to the left of 7th Avenue is where the majority of the historic buildings are, and roughly to the right of that are newer buildings, and that's really the area that we're talking about today, that area to the right. The applicant is requesting to demolish all the buildings in that section. All the buildings, they've numbered them, and so these numbers refer to your staff recommendation, are 2, 3, and 4, were all constructed after 1950 or significantly altered after 1950, which is outside of the period of significance for the National Register nomination for this entire complex. Demolition of these buildings therefore meets Section 7.2.2, as they do not contribute to the historic character of the site. Building 1, however, originally, the first portion of it was constructed in 1869. It was added on to in 1914 and 1955. So that original portion was constructed within the period of significance. However, it is in extremely poor condition due to the damage caused by a tornado and then deferred repairs. The building suffers from water damage, decomposing brick and mortar, and decayed wood. The damage is severe enough that complete reconstruction would be required with very little of the original material left over to be reused. Staff has inspected the building and finds that demolition is appropriate due to the economic hardship involved with the repair or reconstruction of the older portions of the building. I'm going to take one little break here for a second. Would you mind closing that out and pulling up the other images? Therefore, staff recommends demolition of all buildings on this portion of the Worthen complex, finding that demolition meets 7.2 of the design guidelines for the Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning overlay. The applicant is here and can provide you with more details about the shape that that building is in, and has some additional images for you, too.
Okay. Any other questions to staff or for, okay, applicant like to come forward, state your name and address? So these other images are images that the applicant is using. Okay. That we don't have up yet, but.
Do you want to wait for the images to come out?
If you want to, it's up to you.
Go ahead. Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for your time. My name is John Tyrrell, and I'm with SWH Residential Partners. I live at 725 Montana Road in Atlanta, Georgia. I'm a fifth-generation Nashvilleian and lived here for the first 36 years of my life. My father and my brother and his family still live here. And we've, SWH has owned property in the Nashville area since 1991, when we were founded, including the Grove at Whitworth and Richland in the West End area, the Marriott Courtyard in downtown Nashville at Fourth and Church, that was the old J.C. Bradford Building, and prior to that was when my father had his first job at Third National Bank. And then we're, we own property and are very active at Rolling Mill Hill and are working on the Phase 2 development. We've been looking at this site, interested in this site for several years, and then when the Worthen family decided to, Worthen Packaging decided to put on the market, we recently reached an agreement, actually signed a contract two weeks ago, so we're just in the preliminary phases of our planning. We certainly understand it's a sensitive site, it's a great neighborhood, and we want to be part of, a welcome part of the neighborhood. The plan is for it to be a mixed-use development, and also we'll, we'll even include some things like public art, but we're not at a point yet to where we're ready to come present. At this point, we just want to, we were requesting some clarification on kind of what we can work with and what we can, what we cannot. Our goal is, and our plan is, that some of the buildings will be used for some sort of adaptive reuse. And in the next couple of months, next 60 days or so, I'm sure we'll be back before y'all to discuss that. With that, somebody have any questions for me?
Not at the moment.
If you do, I'll be around.
Let's.
Dallas.
Yes, my name is Dallas Cottle. I'm with Smith G. Studio. I'm the project manager and architect representing this project. I live at 7860 Heaton Way in Nashville, Tennessee. We submitted this initial application in conjunction with John and SWH. We, in the initial application, we had some limited pictures and information on the building number one that's on your site plan. Staff requested additional information on that building. In response to that, we provided additional images, and we've also had ourselves and a structural engineer inspect that building to see what we could do with it if it was adaptively reused. Unfortunately, what we found is noted by staff as a severe case of decay, and also the unfortunate thing that we found was that in response to the storm, tornado damage, a significant part of the structure has been replaced. One of the walls, historic walls, has been replaced with CMU block and new brick. Also, over half of the original roof, of the oldest part of the structure, has been replaced with something that's not historically accurate and has also caused a significant amount of water damage to the historic structure. If we go through some of these other slides, we can see examples, and I'll introduce Russell Scrabbitt with Genesis Engineering here soon to talk more about the structural nature of the current status of this building. But again, it is not a safe environment, and to our knowledge also, the existing owner has been informed by their insurance agent that they cannot occupy this building and cannot use it. And so that's what led us also to looking at a more significant review of the status.
So was this report given to staff? I guess, did you guys see that, or was it just based on?
We haven't seen the actual engineering report, but we have seen the images that are before you today, and have inspected the property ourselves as well.
Okay.
And is that Russell Scrabbitt?
I'm Russell Scrabbitt. I'm from Franklin, Tennessee, and I represent Genesis Engineering Group. I guess I'm the said structural engineer that was asked to look at the property. I did so. I walked through the building, all portions of it, and I found, in a number of cases, I found that the exterior walls, particularly along the northern and the northeast corner of the structure, have settled significantly, either as a result of foundation settlement or as a result of mortar deterioration in those areas. Particularly on the north side of the building, it is, you can see the mortar lines sag probably on the order of a foot in some cases. Also, we walked through the interior of the building and discovered significant damage that was not only the result of a storm event, but also of the actual use of the facility over time. I guess this was a bagging facility at one point in time with a lot of movable parts and conveyance systems inside of it, and there were primary load-carrying columns that were damaged. Probably 30% of the material had been chipped away by carts, so regardless of the storm damage, a number of columns would have to be replaced in that area. We also found an area of the main girders, timber girders, that had deteriorated so bad that somebody had stacked up wood pallets from the slab-on-grade up to the bottom of the roof beams that is currently supporting the roof. So definitely a very unsafe condition there. And then I guess I'd sum it up lastly by saying, we did also look at the composition of the exterior walls. They are, it is a bearing wall system of unreinforced multi-width masonry. That is currently not something that would be acceptable under the latest additions of IBC, particularly in IBC 2009. 2006 doesn't fully exclude it, but the next addition will without reinforcing the masonry, particularly because of the seismic zones that Nashville is now falling into. So all that combined together, we think the cost of rehabbing the building would be beyond, far beyond the value of the property.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions to any, any of the applicants?
Yes, make sure I'm clear on exhibits that have been presented for demolition and to remain. On building three, the western half is to remain, and then the eastern, the eastern half is to be demolished with a barrel vault. Are both of those buildings barrel vaulted or just the eastern, eastern half? Or there's kind of a barrel truss or a bostr, excuse me, a bostrum truss on that?
On, are you looking at this?
Yeah.
Okay. The building number three is, is going to be leased back to Worthen Packaging, and the lease term is for up to 15 years, but after two years, they can give a six-month notice and, and move out. So to be honest, we're not sure. Our hope is, and our plan is, to do some sort of adaptive reuse with that building. One of the things we would like to do, but it would be premature to commit to it right now, is reconnect 6th Avenue to sort of re-weave the city block. We really can't do that at 7th because of the Worthen lost project, but that is a possibility and something that we would like to do, but that'll be in a future phase. Our intent and our, is not to come in and demolish the site and just leave this, you know, eyesore for years while we rebuild. This will be a phased project, but like I said, we've just had the property in a contract for two years, and, I mean, two weeks, pardon me, and in fact, just in the last few days, had all the agreements signed. Our design team is entirely local, Smith G. Studio, Hodgson and Douglas on the landscape and land planning, and Little John in engineering. As I said, I was transferred to Atlanta, and my children have grown up there, that's why I'm still there, but, but, you know, I'm very much a hometown person, and I understand it's a very sensitive site.
So just to clarify then, the building is, the application is to demolish all buildings 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5? That's what I'm reading?
Well, we, well. Go ahead.
We wanted to go ahead and get feedback from staff on the historic nature of all the current buildings, which they, they did respond to, and we greatly appreciate that. The current plan right now is to immediately reuse building 5, that's on the corner, to help, as part of the mixed-use development, to activate that corner. The use isn't determined yet. Again, we'll be coming back later with future plans, and we will not be removing all of building 3 in the foreseeable future either.
We may not remove any of building 3 for the foreseeable future.
Right.
We would, we would like to remove building 1 because we feel like that it's unsafe, and building 2, which is the big warehouse-looking building. Those are the two that we're most, that we really need clarity on. Building 5 will remain, and will be some sort of mixed-use, where, again, we're just starting the plans on that, and building 3, and then the little building 4, which is the little yellow block building. I mean, we really don't, I can't, I don't, can't tell you right now whether Worthen's going to be there for three years or for 15 years. I don't know if I'll be here. I don't know if I'll be here in fifteen, you know? So I really, I mean, I'm not trying to be evasive, I honestly don't know.
And I guess this, I will, go ahead.
I'm sorry, and just one other clarification. One of the reasons we would like to go ahead and get permission for building four is it is a, in our opinion, a non-contributing historic, nonhistoric structure. It's a CMU box that was attached to the very impressive historic powerhouse building, and honestly, as part of the cleaning up and uniting this site with the existing Worthen property, we'd like the ability to remove that so you can actually even see the historic building better and start cleaning up that site and cleaning up that now, which is an unfortunate fence line. So we do want to get permission for building four at this time.
Very well. My clarity is that the application is to demolish all the buildings, and despite, I live in the neighborhood, or I lived as of a few weeks ago, closed on my house there, but will be back in the neighborhood shortly. I don't want my neighbors beating down my door in that, I see the intent on the application, but if this committee approves demolition, I mean, those buildings are at your discretion coming down, and I, it sounds like that there is going to be some adaptive reuse of the site, and my curiosity is that how, and perhaps yours is too at this point, is this a fact-finding, fact-finding mission to see how many we can pull down, what we have to save, or is the intent to fully develop the site, get rid of the buildings that are on the eastern portion of the site, and come in with new development at some to-be-determined density that will, you know, meet the historic zoning guidelines?
In that very long question, it's the latter. Our intention is to immediately reuse one of the structures. One of the structures will can be continued in its existing use for anywhere from two to fifteen years, and we intend to immediately move forward quickly with redevelopment of the area of primarily building two, but also building one, that will be a more appropriate use for that neighborhood other than warehouses with blank walls and berms and a razor-water fence.
Very good, yeah, thanks for the clarity.
Any more questions to the applicant?
Yeah, and I just wanted, and we are perfectly satisfied at this time to only get approval to demolish building one, two, and four if necessary.
Yeah, we're very comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, did you have a?
I think the applicant just anticipated my question. I was going to ask for clarity on what the board's task for approval is. Is it to approve demolition for one, two, and four, or for the entire thing, because I know it's kind of evolving?
We're before, to be clear, we're before, and those are very good questions, and I appreciate it. And we are before the commission today to request demolition permits for building one, building two, and building four.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. All right, any more questions to the applicant? Sure?
Just one question. When you look at the whole scheme, and building three, which is going to land, you've got at least two of them for two years' allowance, and when high-ho is being demolished, is that when the lease is done?
They are, the Worthen operations will only be in building three A. They are currently not using three B. It's already been abandoned from operations and is not currently in use.
I actually need to clarify, they're leasing back, see where Sixth Avenue comes in right here? Okay, they're leasing back from us from about right there and all of this, and the reason they are is they've got some old presses in there that they're continuing to operate, and they don't know how long their customers will want the bags that are printed from those presses, and so that's why the lease term is so flexible for them. And like I said, we're, our initial thinking is to recreate the blocks here with Sixth Avenue, kind of re-weave between Taylor and Hume and have that additional connectivity. But, and so to do that, we would have to take down at least part of that building. But we're not asking for a permit for that building right now.
Yeah, we'll just, I think we're going to go with the focus on buildings one, two, and four today is what we'll focus on, so we will not even look at three and five based on the clarification from the applicant. Okay, good question. Any other questions to the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Is anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against this project? Okay, no one speak? Closed public hearing, discussion?
Question for, actually, I guess a clarification for staff. Buildings, and specifically with regard to buildings three A and B, you know, as industrial artifacts, maybe I have an affection for them, having lived in the neighborhood. Certainly, I understand they're outside of the period of historical significance as determined in the incorporation of the Germantown neighborhood and specifically this site into the district. What is the opinion of staff as to the viability of those buildings, and could you speak a little bit more about that from your analysis?
If you're asking about the viability in terms of the structural shape that they're in, I did not inspect it to that extent. Since it was nonhistoric, our greatest concern was building number one, which is the one that we really took a lot of time to look at, the structural integrity. Since the others were outside of the period of significance, we didn't look at them to that extent. Certainly, all of them have some potential to be reused, although not that's necessary because they're historic, we didn't feel like it was necessary.
In order to have your suspicion over that for us?
And I say we just, yeah, for now, well, maybe it'll be long enough where it is historic, but just on one, two, and four, I have a question on the historic one. Do we, they're not going to lose the award they got, it wasn't awards, you know, that they got to lose?
The National Register nominee?
I appreciate that, thank you, the designation.
It's my understanding that this will not affect that. I think what will be, will have a greater effect on it is the new construction, which of course we don't know about yet.
I know sometimes in the past we will ask for a, like a photo, you know, detailing of everything that's still there, and have we requested that of the applicant to make sure we keep all that?
We have not, but we could.
Okay. And do we need to have a, on record, the structural hardship, like a kind of financial thing, too, for the record, just so, I mean, it sounds by the evidence that it's pretty dangerous, but I know in the past we've had maybe a little bit more of a report that you can?
We have gone to that level when staff and the applicant disagreed as to whether or not it's an economic hardship. Again, based on our inspection and the information provided, we felt like it was very clear it was an economic hardship, and didn't ask them to go to that extent.
Okay.
Do that in, you're confident you have the document, enough documentation to support that funding?
That's correct, yes.
So we would, it would be good if we could get the photo?
Sure.
Photo diary of everything so that we can have that on record. Okay, any more questions to staff or any more discussion, or any discussion? Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of the application at 1515 Fifth Avenue North for the demolition of buildings one, two, and four, noting that, for the record, that building one has been deemed by both the applicant's analysis and the staff's inspection to be both an economic hardship and a danger, and is beyond, I guess, reasonable repair, albeit historically significant structure, and that buildings two and four as being non-contributing and outside the period of significance for demolition, as meeting the Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay guidelines.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, staff, is there any other new business for today?
We have no more, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, meeting adjourned.